Yeah, I got the package.
Travis, is that you that's admin this evening or Eric? Eric, did you invite Mr. Greenwood to unmute? Not yet.
Stand by.
There we go.
Yep, as always, technical difficulties. Nobody else had any trouble. The link didn't work on me. I saw everybody's name and I saw everybody's number, but there were no pictures. There was no video. I had to do it manually.
I don't know. It seemed a little slower tonight, but mine popped on up.
Is everybody here? One, two, three. Travis is here with no picture. Oh, there he is. Okay.
He was up there with the picture.
Yep, there he is. He's just eating. Doesn't want us to see him. Okay, everybody ready? Okay, I guess we'll start since it's already after seven. Don't have a gavel, so I just bang the table. I like to call this work session Board of Supervisors Organizational Meeting of January 11th, 2021, which is our organizational meeting, first of the year, King William County Board of Supervisors called to order. Ms. Lawrence, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Miskowski?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here from beautiful downtown West Point.
Mr. Garber?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here. Next item we have on the agenda is the review and adoption of the agenda meeting agenda. And I guess everybody, I hope everybody got it today, since the emails got changed and some of it came to the old emails, some came to the new ones. But hopefully, everybody got the new one. The only thing different on the new one is an added five G for discussion topics supervisor Bill Hodges. That's the only thing I noticed is on the agenda amended agenda.
Hey, Mr. Chair, is it my understanding that we do, that there's issues with the bylaws and we need to table that? And if so, then I'll make that recommendation. If not, then I won't.
Well, it's not that it needs to be tabled because at the last, at our regular meeting, we discussed that we needed to be changed. And Andrew hasn't had time to come up with that. So in any way, we need to have a special meeting with a certain number of days before anyway. So we can just go with what they say now because we've been doing that all along and then just have us, if you want, either, either one is fine, whichever you feel is best. The only thing difference is that we wanted to turn the first work session into our regular organizational meeting and have the wording changed.
I got you. Okay, then I will make a motion to accept the meeting agenda as, as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Uh.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi. Next item we have on the agenda is the organization of the Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2021. We have four A, and I would like to make a motion that we follow the normal succession of our previous vice chairman moving into the position of the chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion made and properly seconded, but are there any other discussion or nominations?
For the, for the record, should we say that it's Travis J. Miskowski?
We probably should. Yes, yes, it's probably should since we're all on Zoom now, right? Thank you, Bill. It is a Mr. Travis. Any other discussion or clarification? Um, okay, then seeing none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to nominate Edwin H. Moran Jr. for vice chair.
We have a nomination on the floor for Mr. Moran to serve as vice chair for the calendar year 2021. Are there any other nominations from the floor? If none, I will close the floor to nominations. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to elect Mr. Moran as vice chair.
I'll make a motion that we elect Mr. Moran as vice chair.
Second.
We'll do Mr. Garber and Mr. Greenwood as a second. Any discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Uh, let me just take a personal point of privilege real quick if it pleases the board and thank Mr. Greenwood for his year of service as chairman. It's been a challenging year by every measure. He has risen to the occasion, faced every challenge head on, and I think did a job worth commending. So thank you very much, Stephen, for, for the job. Well done in 2020. Thank you.
And that comes from all the board, I think.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
All right, gentlemen, next up, uh, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the Board of Supervisors bylaws, which we, we just discussed. Again, I think I'm happy to go ahead and proceed with what we have. We can always go back and, and make any changes that we want to make as to, you know, basically, which that we were worried about was all pertaining to the calendar, nothing really of substance, other than to just clarify some dates. So I would go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt the bylaws as they had been presented. And then we can go back at a later date and, and clarify just some of that language regarding the organization meeting and the meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded discussion. Hearing none. Sorry, Mr. Greenwood.
Like you said, just to make a point of clarification, since we're all in Zoom, just to make a note that if we could have Mr. Edward, not Mr. Edwards, or a county attorney look at that to come up with the proper wording for that first paragraph to, and like I said, you may have already done that anyway. So whatever somebody comes up with, just have it so that it's written. We'll have it in the future.
We'll come up with something.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Uh, and then we move on to the adoption of the board meeting calendar for 2021. Mr. Greenwood, you had a proposal regarding this. Did you want to discuss that real quick before we move into any motions?
Sure. Um, actually, everything looks pretty good up until we get to the month of October. And it looks like we had October. A question was, one of the days was a holiday. So instead of having a work session that month, I'm suggesting that we just cancel the work session. It sort of makes it a little easier so that we don't have to have two meetings right in a way of right in a row to cancel the work session for October, have the October meeting as regularly scheduled on the fourth Monday, which would be the 25th on November. Go ahead and move it, the work session to the 15th, since the eighth is our VACO conference and have the regular meeting on the fourth Thursday, which is the 29th, and then the rest of them as, as stated in the schedule.
That was a motion, correct?
Uh, yes.
Well, Mr. Discussion yet, sorry.
All right. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second to adopt the calendar as Mr. Greenwood proposed?
Uh, I have, I have an issue with April. The week of, I think it's the 10th through the 17th. I am going to be in North Carolina the whole week. And I know that the 12th is a scheduled work session. I'm wanting, if we can move that day long budget session, I think that's flexible if we can move that. So I wouldn't, so I can visit if it may be Zoom anyway.
Probably will be.
I don't foresee changing, but I mean, I don't have a problem with moving at it.
I mean, I could do both of them Zoom. But I know we're, we're only allowed two a year if, if that's not still considered under the governor's order.
It is still considered.
I think it's under the governor's order. I really do. I, I don't think any of them are counting now, even though we have declared.
So that won't be an issue?
Well, that's true. I get we, but we don't know where we're going to be in April. I, I, I do wonder, though, if moving that, especially that all day budget work session is feasible because usually that's, that's got to fit in with finances workload, trying to get that budget finalized. So, um, you know, if, if we need to play with the, the date for the work session, I might, one thing, it might be a little bit more difficult to change the data that all day work session, but.
Yeah, that, that all day work session last year, it wasn't all day, but it's kind of tough doing that Zoom, I can tell you.
Can, Mr. Chair, can we move the budget session to the ninth and knock out the work session? Are we going to need both?
It's tough to say. Um, you know, depends on how the budget's shaping up. Um, you know, I, I don't have my calendar planned out that far in advance as far as my, my, my personal stuff. But, um, you know, does anybody else have a conflict around that date if we were to move it or is it pretty wide open?
No, you know, I didn't, I didn't realize it at the last meeting, you know, that particular weekend. Anyway, it's, it's scheduled, so. I can do it. I can do both Zoom. I, I would prefer the budget session to, if it's going to be us attending to be able to go, but.
Mr. Chair, may I make a statement?
Of course.
If for some reason the Friday to April 16th wouldn't work and possibly could we do it the following Monday? Or the day long work session?
I can't take Mondays.
So there, that was kind of one of my, one of my questions there is, is what type of flexibility do we have as a group? You know, I, I can be reasonably flexible with it, but if Mr. Greenwood can't take Mondays off, then that would seem to answer that question.
Well, in that time constraint, that's the way, the reason that we lay it out that way. So that the finance department will have plenty of time to take in all of the recommendations by the board and have everything finalized and ready by the end of the month, so.
That, that was a concern I had, Stuart, and, and, um, you know, a lot of these things are timed out so that we're getting the work done right on time, um, you know, to provide maximum time for public input. It is a lot of the reason that we schedule it out the way that we do. But that, you know, that Friday work session is, is kind of the last push to get it adopted by the deadline dates. And then also be able to meet the deadlines with the school's budget as well. So we may be, uh, you know, constrained to kind of, we, it might be the case that we have to keep it that day. So here's what I'll propose so that we can kind of move along and we can all maybe check our schedules and see if there are any other opportunities to move it. Let's go and adopt it as we have it. And then let's work over the next week or so to see if there is an opportunity to get another day that's close to that. But if not, we'll go ahead and do what we have to do to accommodate Stuart getting in there remotely.
Mr. Chair, when you're saying that you're adding in the amended part that Mr. Greenwood suggested, correct?
That's right. We would basically be at this point adopting what's, what's already on the table with the motion. But I do believe we lack a second currently.
I, I will do a second.
Okay.
So remotely is not going to be an issue, right?
I, I don't foresee it being an issue, Stuart, because at the very least, even if we exit the, you know, the state of emergency, you will have days in which you could do it. We just need to be judicious about how we use them. But at the same time, I mean, looking at just what the reality is, I, I think we're all anticipating probably still operating this way by then. But the options regardless of what, what happens, I just, my concern was, and it's been confirmed by staff that moving that date kind of upsets the, the kind of delicate domino that we have to make sure that everything happens on time as we move towards adoption of the budget.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
With the, uh, I, I tend to urge not to post, not to cancel the fourth October yet. We have plenty of time. Who knows what's going to happen 10 months down the road? To leave it open for now, flexibility wise? Or is that actually a, is a, if, what of those dates is actually a holiday, the fourth or the 18th?
The 11th.
In October?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm really confused. We're, we have the fourth and the 18th in yellow.
Yes, they were the suggestions to move the work session, but I'm just saying getting rid of the work session because it's supposed to be on the 11th. If we push it to the fourth, it's a week after the previous meeting. If we push it to the 18th, it's a week before the next meeting. So it's just too many meetings. But we can pick one of those days if you want to have it on the schedule just to have it. But there is a motion and seconded already.
My point, my, well, this is the discussion period is invited. Okay. Then I'm saying, I'm just simply saying or suggesting that we may have work to do if we automatically cancel it. Can we bring it back or is it just easier to leave it there and then cancel it at a later date?
That's true as well, either one, but I, I'll make a motion to amend my, and put it back for the fourth. That way we'll have a day on there, an extra day if you want, you know.
Agreed.
All right, you, okay, so are you amending your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Greenwood is amending the motion that he has already had seconded. That withdraws the second. So just if people are keeping running tabs now, at this point, we would be adding back in an October work session on the fourth.
Right.
And I will second that again.
Okay. Any discussion on the amended motion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Okay, um, next we move on to the fiscal year 2022 budget schedule. Ms. Tastner, do you want to do any lead in with that or just?
Yes, sir. That was brought to you by the Director of Finance a couple of months ago. It is just to finalize the dates to make sure that they fit within your schedule.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion on this proposed budget timeline? If not.
Just, just to make a note, that's where I got the tentative from on the April 12th and April 16th. They were tentative schedules. Wasn't trying to cause any grief.
All right, if no one has any additions, subtract, subtracts or corrections, let's go ahead and get a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt. It's good. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Stuart.
We have Stuart and Ed.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion. We adopt the budget preparation schedule.
Second once again.
Very good. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. All right, now we've got to get through board appointments. The first one is ARC Review Board. If someone, remind me who currently serves in that position? Because it's not me.
Yeah, you, you cut out. I'm sorry.
Bill, you're currently on the ARC.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and I'm good with staying if that's okay with the board.
If you're, if you're, your desire to continue, then I would give deference on that. Uh, unless anyone has strong objections, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Hodges to the Historical Preservation and Architectural Review Board, better known as the ARC Review Board.
Second.
Well, we have to make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Hodges to the Historical Preservation and Architecture Review Board.
Can we apply your second? Very good. All right. All right, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Greenwood?
Hi.
Hi.
Miskowski?
Hi. Next up is Middle Peninsula Planning District. That is two of us currently comprised of myself and Mr. Moran. I am happy to continue to serve on that board. And again, if Mr. Moran wants to continue his service, I would entertain a motion to appoint both you and I to the NPPD.
Willing enable?
And I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Very good. Discussion? With none, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Greenwood?
Hi.
I'm sorry, but I, I'm losing audio here.
Yeah, I lost them there, too, you know.
It, is it my turn?
Yeah.
Hi.
Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. Next up is Planning Commission. Mr. Greenwood has been serving well on that commission for a while now. And if it's his desire to continue to serve, which Mr. Greenwood is.
Yes.
Very good.
And I'll make a motion.
Very good.
And I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I wish to express my interest in serving at any opportunity that this commission expands in future.
Ms. Lawrence?
Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Garber?
Hi.
Moran?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, next up is Recreation Commission. Mr. Garber, you've been serving on that commission so far. And if it's desire to continue to serve, I would support a resolution to appoint you to that commission.
Yeah, I'd like to continue. This has been a short year and, uh, still have quite a bit to learn, to be honestly.
Has it been a year? Because it didn't feel like.
It's been tough. I mean, you know, meetings have been canceled and, you know, you, you're going through a learning curve and, yeah, stuff. Y'all guys know that.
I know, Jimmy.
But I think you better get ready for 2021 because I don't see a big difference.
Either is not going to get better.
Motion to appoint Mr. Garber?
And so I can, I think it was a motion, right? My audio is cutting in and out.
Yes, I made the motion to appoint Mr. Garber to the rec board.
In second.
Very good. Discussion with none, Ms. Lawrence, once again.
Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi. All right, last up is the Social Services Board. Once again, Mr. Garber's been serving in that post for this first year of the term. If it is his desire to continue to serve, I would support a resolution appointing him to that commission board in the.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I'm sorry.
To stay on the board.
I wasn't giving you a choice. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Hi.
Miskowski?
Hi. Okay, that dispenses pro forma of our organizational meeting. Congratulations, gentlemen. We have another year ahead of us. Um, okay, now on the work session matters. First up, we have fire and EMS update. Chief Reeves, you're up.
Hello, good evening. I'll run through staffing. Uh, as we discussed earlier or later in the last year, we applied for the SAFER grant. We can expect to hear back somewhere between July and September as far as what gets awarded from the federal government on that. We're continuing to work on our policies to improve our quality of service in the department. We've gotten quite a bit of positive feedback from the hospitals and agencies around us on the level of care that's been delivered to the patients that are coming into the facilities. And within those, those policies, we're adapting our organization to meet all these tiny crises that have come up through the COVID virus, trying to improve our decontamination and, you know, make sure that we're treating patients appropriately for their sicknesses as well as keeping our folks safe. We have had some internal positive tests, but they all came from outside of our organization. And we've had to date no, uh, internal transmission. And I, you know, I think that's got a lot to do with the instructor, the stru- internal structure improvement as well as all the efforts that are being put forth by the county and the guidelines coming forth from the Health Department and the state. The, uh, we're still talking to all of the agencies around us for, for the, uh, the career recruit school, keeping everybody, you know, informed and consistently are constantly trying to manipulate that situation for, for our benefit. Our apparatus, we, all of our vehicles are in service currently with the exception of ambulance 13, which is our last out ambulance. The heat and air in the patient compartment is broken. With the upcoming EMS inspection for the license renewal, this week, we decided to just hold it out of service because all of the equipment is there and ready to be inspected in the event that the state rep decides to take a look at that truck. And then after Wednesday, we'll schedule it to go out and be repaired. We were, uh, had to install a couple of batteries in one of the trucks. One of our other ambulances was fully serviced and one of the Tahoe's for the chief response and was, uh, had to have some work done on the electrical system inside of it. It's over 170,000 miles. Come up new for inspection. It's going to need shocks. The engine is probably, we're going to have to look at buying tires for the engine and the brush truck here very soon. Station one is still closed to the public due to COVID pandemic. And we're probably going to tighten down on that even more. We cut out all visitors without appointments starting next week from the county. That's the same thing. Our HEACs have been repaired. Thanks to our maintenance department, we have installed touchless faucets in, uh, for all the sinks throughout. And our generator is down now. It's been down for a little while and the maintenance division is taking care of getting a repair done for that, especially since we're going into the inclement winter. We have some rooms up above the far end of the firehouse that have been cleaned out. A bunch of old stored items that were out of date or not usable. And we are now currently using that to store COVID and PPE, you know, devices and equipment to make sure that we have stuff in the event that we have a great big shortage again like we did before. We're starting to be able to get our hands on some of the stuff that we really need. Uh, N95 masks, as you guys well know, through the media have been very hard to come by. And of course, in, in these type situations, industry always comes up with an answer. There are some new devices out there that have been tested and approved by the CDC and NIOSH, which we're going to probably test a few of those things, but we weren't able to get our hands on some universal size N95 masks that are approved for surgical environments so that we will actually have the, the non-industrial version, but more the medical mask that we can put out in the trucks. We've improved our requirements for our guys when they go to calls to wear a KN95 above the surgical mask at the, um, suggestion of the CDC and a lot of our bordering agencies are doing the same thing. We have asked our personnel to wear masks or required to wear masks based on CDC recommendations when they're at work. And they cannot isolate themselves from anybody by six feet. So our guys are wearing masks pretty much 24 hours at a time unless they're away from everybody else. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. The gear washers for number one, I mean, sorry, uh, number one in West Point were kind of delayed. Uh, West Point needed to do some, uh, changes in their washroom and Station one had an issue with some plumbing. All that's been repaired and we're waiting on the folks from, uh, the vendor to come out and actually do the install because there's a self mixing part to it that prevents waste. And over, uh, putting too much detergent in the, you know, cleaner. We have installed the antenna that we bought for admin and maintenance has finished their electrical work on that. And we're just waiting on the vendor, radio communications of Virginia to come back out and tie that in. And at that point, all of the entire admin building will. And at that point, all of the entire admin building will work for our portable radios. So the sheriff's deputies and fire and EMS, we actually built a here the radio on the building. Chief Jones is still working on the uh smoke detector program to try to figure out all the the ins and outs of the funding for that for our citizens. You know, he's been delayed to the uh not being able to get in touch with people, uh offices being closed, the holidays, COVID. Our CPR class that we have with the school for the teachers went through and um which unfortunately now we're having to pull back so that we need secret classes now are gonna be pushed back. Code Red's been being utilized for a while. We're still continuing to try and get that training in for our users. West Point uh was given all the information uh and I think Mr. Evans has been working on the website. We've met with the engineers from Farina and Nestle uh over there, some of their expansion stuff going on and we're we're gonna have some more meetings uh as they move forward with their demo and they're prepped to add some of the changes on the backside of the building over there. And uh they've offered to do some commercial safety training with our firemen. So I look forward to working with them over the next several months to have our guys work sitting some of their training classes to be aware of what's going on on site in case of an emergency. You also get the the training, you know, that helps them with every day, other calls that they go to that might have something to do with industrial stuff. The uh Three Rivers Health District uh asks for uh folks to come out and assist with uh vaccinations. We had a a couple folks that were interested in it. Um, however, uh they never moved on it. Um, we've sent a few people out for the first round of shots. West Point, Mangahick, and the sheriff's office, um, all were notified. I I know that what I didn't hear back from West Point. I feel confident because uh the chief down there asked me about it and he's was getting ready to to try to get all his stuff together, send his folks over. Mangahick has sent some people and the sheriff's office has sent, he's trying to send half his people on one day and another half another day, you know, with courts and everything. It's kind of making it hard to schedule. And these uh, the district is gonna be rolling out the different levels of of shots. The Knicks go around, they're gonna be asking for schools um to give them a number. They don't want to know how many employees we have. They want to know how many people are gonna take the shot. Uh, some of the things that they're actually having problems with are logistics. They have to, you have to take a fifteen minute wait period after you take the shot before you can leave the site. So the drive-through clinics, they would find are slowing them down because you gotta, everybody, you know, the car is sitting in line, so on and so forth. They did a, they did one inside of a gymnasium with a decent sized parking lot and they did three hundred vaccinations in like six hours. So they're gonna probably want to do most of that stuff indoors if they can. We're trying to plan a vaccination clinic for the tribes, which will also incorporate staff from uh emergency services in the sheriff's office for anybody that's left that needs to get the vaccine. And then from there, we're gonna be requesting for the numbers of folks internally in the government and the preparing to give the vaccinations to seventy-five and older. That will all come through the Health Department, not the Fire Department, so please don't let me get out of line with that, but um, the board members and the internal offices of people who deal with the public and who deal with the people who deal with the public directly, courts, um the uh social services, uh county administrator, board supervisors, they're gonna, we're gonna be asking for those numbers to go through the emergency manager very soon. So just to put that out there so you guys are ready to give us an answer. And again, we reach out.
One, one thing, anybody going, planning to spend some time because I spent, I I think, a little over two and a half hours in line. It's that many down there.
It's not a quick process.
No, it's not. Uh, it's pretty quick getting a shot, but getting to the interior, they did a double line, you know, in the emergency center down there in Warsaw and it's still, it was backed all the way around. I called it cow paste.
And we have been um they're reaching out to us now to uh have our folks in EMS be able to become vaccinators, if you will. And uh we're just now getting information in and we have to work through the O M D. She has to approve it and want to be part of the uh vaccination process. And if if with all that is approved, we'll be reaching out to our providers. They have to be an intermediate for a paramedic cleared certification. And then they have to take specific training on actually giving the vaccination and the O M D will have to build a plan to maintain all the records and to keep all of the reporting within the guidelines of the state and federal government. So she may or may not want to engage in that, but that comes down to us as a fire department. Uh, King William County Fire EMS will be, was designated by the uh Three Rivers to be the point of contact, but we will be able to, if Dr. Dodd approves it, to reach out to Mangahick and West Point to have, see if they have any providers that want to, you know, participate. And that pretty much wraps up all the stuff that I have. Um, you guys have any questions for me?
Hey, Chief Ed Warren, uh, two things on the CPR qua- those that have to requirement to ma- remain current. Do you know if they're issuing or allowing waivers or extensions with uh being unable to attend these things in person? Any idea?
I don't know. Uh, I do know that for different levels of CPR, our CPR for the field, they recommend that we have a hands-on portion. But um you can still become CPR certified by a um an organization that's affiliated approved by the Department of Health where you can do it all online. But that, you know, that's not something that I would recommend for people who are gonna be out providing emergency care to do. But and and as far as I know, CPR is not one of the ones that we we're getting waivers on.
And my second uh question comment is regarding the vaccination program. Are you, are you considered that the department is leaning forward, as we say, or are you, are you in a wait and see mode?
As far as the vaccination, like giving the vaccinations or receiving?
Yes, yes. The the reason I ask is that I I've been extremely disappointed in the rollout. I'm I'm hoping everyone here is disappointed in the rollout of this vaccination, especially with Three Rivers. Uh, you go to their website and it's, we're not doing anything right now, it seems to me, but maybe they're stepping up, but if if someone else is not gonna take care of it as much as we can do to take care of it is appreciated.
Right. I think, I think part of it was trying to get the rollout started. They've been planning for at least forty-five to sixty days. We've been meeting with them very regularly. Liz and I have uh over the past thirty days met several times with them on the rollout of the vaccination and the the initial rollout. Their hands were tied by the federal government because they only gave them a handful of shots. So every district of the ten districts only got five shots. So, you know, five vaccinations per district. Now, the second go around after they, I think they probably did that partially to make sure that they had everything in line so that they were doing the proper procedures to make sure the vaccinations were safe and all the documentation was taking place. The second circle that came through, they're doing hundreds of vaccinations. And as this progresses forward, now that we're vaccinating our providers, they're asking our providers to start to vaccinate. So it's kind of like a a branching off scenario where it just gets bigger and bigger. So and and they're gonna be dependent on all of us to help take care of that because there just aren't that many people in the Health Department and the in the council, so.
Okay.
Okay. Chief, I don't know who all the uh workers were down there at Warsaw, but they said that they would continue to dispense these every Thursday uh until they're told to stop. And the thing is, I think most of the first responders right now. And Ed's right, I don't think it's any for the elderly at this point.
No, sir. That's coming up very soon. Um, I'm just, I'm just briefing you guys on that so please don't let me get out of line with it. Currently, only first responders and in the smaller localities, they're also vaccinating deputies and sheriff's staff at request.
Chief Reeves, the the grant that uh Rappahannock Electric Corp, uh, the one we didn't get.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how much, how much was that grant?
It was very.
To be.
Five thousand dollars. It was a smaller.
Okay, small, okay.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Next up is uh Steve Hudgens with DEQ Water Withdrawal.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How you doing?
As stated in the memo in your packet, um, there are currently three water systems in the county that are in the DEQ groundwater withdrawal process. Um, first one I want to talk about is the central garage water system, which we have already spent quite a bit of time talking about. Um, this is just another piece of that puzzle on uh how to grow that system. Um, so application was first made two years ago uh to DEQ and uh we received response a couple months ago and they are pushing back as expected on what we're asking for. Uh, we, the county made uh a pretty good case, we thought. Uh, numbers, projections off of real uh real developments, uh interviews with the development community, uh plans that are in the mix and came up with a number from that. Um, but DEQ only wants to look at uh census data that we don't really feel applies. And in fact, they are uh proposing to limit our amount even more than what our permit is right now. So we have already contracted uh Cardno to come with a response. Because it's taken two years for them to get back to us, we have two years worth of data since then that we feel uh verifies uh strong growth in this area and that we still have a very good case to make for our proposal. DEQ would rather take it in a direction of limit us and then make us go through a major modification to the permit in five or so years, but this would cost thousands of dollars and not give us a clear idea of what we could possibly get. So we don't see that as a feasible solution. Moving on to the Fontaine Blue Industrial Park System. This system currently does not have a DEQ withdrawal permit. It is permitted through the Health Department, which limits it to three hundred thousand gallons a month. And data has shown that um in the last two or three years, we have withdrawn more than that. That site has withdrawn more than that. And uh DEQ has been made aware of this. Uh, we were in discussion on purpose. We made them aware of this uh and discussed with them the possibility of including this system with the central garage system. They had a preference in how to do this. What is the best way uh for us to permit our water. Um, and their main goal is to get this system under DEQ permits immediately. That will surely be a conditional permit. That well does not meet DEQ standards. And based on similar situations throughout the state, we will have five years to abandon that uh well. So within five years, we need to have a solution in place of what we're doing, either drilling a new well or uh looping it in with the central garage water system. What's concerned?
Mr. Hudgens. So a- abandoned versus drawing down is is that a black and white issue?
Uh, it's my understanding that the construction, the actual physical construction of the well does not meet DEQ construction standards and there's no real remediation for that. It would have to be abandoned and a new well done.
Okay.
So coupled that with the fact that Nestle Purine is having a hard time getting uh power, consistent power uh from Dominion and HRSD has threatened their production water source. The county really wants to do whatever we can to make sure they have potable water from the county uh to sustain growth there, either from Nestle or for many other interested uh customer that might want to move into our industrial park. And lastly, we, the county did offer and the schools graciously accepted uh us to spearhead getting a groundwater withdrawal reapplication permit for the uh county schools at Aquinton Aquinton Elementary and Hamilton Homes. And we have just started scoping that out um and have a pre-application meeting scheduled. Any questions?
Steve, on the uh graph, not the graph, but the uh printout that you have on usage for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, it has a figure down at the very bottom of the page on on the twenty nineteen figures. Uh, four hundred seventy-four thousand and fourteen max per month.
That's correct.
So we're only, we're only permitted for three hundred thousand?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's it's no way to ask for per- permit for more since the max is four seventy-four. I know you said the the well is obsolete.
There's no way. What we're doing, we're asking for a permit for more than, more than three hundred thousand, basically.
Right.
Because right now, it's under a just health department permit. Three hundred thousand. Once you hit that threshold, you have to go through DEQ. And that's what we're dealing with now.
And you said that they would unlikely give us a permit for that? Or or you don't know yet?
Likely, um, but it's going to be another fight just like these
Right.
With central garage of justifying why we need water and they're even less likely less amenable to giving water to industrial use than resident.
The central water uh garage water system, I think, I guess the county had projected uh twenty-five percent uh linear growth. And they are only seeing seven to ten percent. How long of a period are we looking at the projected twenty-five percent? How many years?
Um, per year, basically. So it'd be, I think, five, over those fifteen years, we would grow uh I think five times. Five hundred percent.
So we're looking at twenty, their projection was twenty-five percent per year? Is that what it was? Okay. All right.
What we're asking for is even less than what we are already permitted for right now. But since we haven't used that much, they're still saying they're cutting it far back.
They want to reduce it, yeah. That's all.
Anybody else? Well, I wish I could say it's disappointing the DEQ has given us a hard time, but at the same time, I don't think it's anything unexpected. Uh, that's pretty much their memo when it comes to King William County uh and perhaps the Middle Peninsula writ large. Um, so uh keep fighting, anything we can do at a board level, um, you know, please, please let us know. This is important. Um, and we we thank you for your effort so far and uh, yeah, just let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, and I guess you're not going anywhere because you're up for Motorola Motorola Radio Project update.
That's correct. So Motorola Project is moving forward. Um, we have completed the staging. This was milestone number two. Um, it was staged offsite, which means that they brought all the equipment together. They did some programming, set up, um, got it ready to assemble in the field. This was actually gone out of state. Um, since then, they um have shipped to Glen Allen, Virginia and are ready to deploy here in the field as soon as the sites are ready to receive the equipment. Oh, and that is the next step is the um site work. Uh, we just completed permitting process, a review process. Uh, we'll actually be issuing permits tomorrow. And we're looking at breaking site work ground um in the next few weeks, a couple of weeks or so. And we're looking at breaking site work ground in the next few weeks, a couple of weeks or so. This actually includes some work that the county will be doing or contracting for, including putting in a concrete pad for electrical equipment over at the courthouse and having to demo the old concrete block shed that's at the high school tower. The high school tower, it's, it's made a few a few issues going forward, but it's actually, I still, it will generate revenue for the county. But right now, it's made a few upfront costs acquiring it that we weren't aware of to start this project. As I stated in the memo, we were thinking that we were going to expand the sites, but now we've contracted it back. And that may, means that we had to demo this, the shed. We've had to work through some structural issues, not really issues at the site. We just had to confirm what was actually there. And thankfully, a third-party inspection showed that what was there was in good shape. Tighten up some guy wires and we'll be good. We are still working through some issues with financing. We have lease agreements in place with all other sites besides the State Police Tower. We actually have equipment on the State Police Tower, but we do not have a signed landlord agreement from that time or lease agreement from that time. So, that as well as a landlord agreement, which is above that, both need to get signed by the Attorney General for the State Police Tower. And then we have a landlord agreement that needs to be signed between Bank of America and tower owners for the AT&amp;T Tower as well as the SBA Tower. So, that is three towers that we are waiting on agreements from out of five. This is not helping the process so far as far as installation. And like I said, we are looking at starting site work very soon.
Does that look like that's going to be a problem? Getting the agreement signed?
It might be a problem timing-wise. I think all parties are moving towards an agreement. But as far as what we've got on schedule for completion and when to install things, up until now, we've been able to draw down on the funds because no equipment has been on-site. And these landlord agreements all have to do with Bank of America being able to go on-site and get equipment if we default. But going forward, they're not going to allow us to draw down because it's going to be equipment and capital on-site. It looks like the SBA Tower agreement is pretty close. It's being signed by both parties. ATC, owners of the AT&amp;T Tower up on Upshaw, they are still going back and forth. And then it's kind of anybody's guesses of when the Attorney General is going to get to it for the State Police Tower.
Thank you. Mr. Hudgens, out of curiosity, the archaeological investigation, was that Native American remains or something else?
That's correct. It's not that anything was found, it's just that we are in an area that would need that investigation done if, if you expand it. It's all because it is a federally owned, federally regulated tower.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rusty. All right, next up, do we have Mr. Magnet on the meeting with us?
Gentlemen, Mr. Magnet will not be with us tonight. He and I had some further discussions over the past week. And he asked for more time before he came and presented to the board. But I did want to update you briefly on the discussions that we've had. Mr. Magnet, who's the Director of VIPSa, Steve Hudgens, the Director of Operations, Sherry Graham with Funding and Zoning, and then Natasha Journalin with Director of Finance. We all have had a Zoom meeting with him, talking to him about some of the issues that y'all brought up at the last meeting, asking about returning some of the days to Fworth and to the King William Landfield. I was able to get a dollar or mail, which would be $14,400 an annual amount for adding back in those fifth days. But at the same time, he's also evaluating bringing all sites to six full days. We're looking at possibly an alternative site, if that is an option for dealing with the transfer station next to the high school because of the impact of the density of use and of course, the road concerns. So, what I would like to request is that we put Mr. Magnet on the schedule for the February work session. He will have much more detailed information to provide at that time.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Thank you.
All right, well, the next up, we have Ms. Journalin with the financial updates.
Good evening. Tonight, I wanted to update the board on county finance activities. Eric, would you mind sharing the PDF I had sent over to you? Thank you. And the PDF that we're getting ready to review is actually the treasurer funds that has been sent over to the school for this fiscal year. So, just kind of want to keep everybody on the same page. So, regarding the transfers from treasurer to school versus appropriation for current fiscal year, I'm providing an update for transfers that have occurred within this fiscal year through December 31st, 2020. This information was sent to the schools and the treasurer for review and to keep all departments updated of the transfers to date. So, as of December 2020, the treasurer has transferred a total of 5.2 million to the schools. Total revenues received by the county as of December 2020 that make up the funding to schools was 4.9 million. Total fiscal year 2021 appropriation to schools for county is 9.5 million, leaving a total of 4.3 remaining of the appropriation for this fiscal year. So, if you, you'll see the different columns where it says transferred by treasurer. So, what that is, is funds, just when she, from my understanding, is when the, the schools bring over the checks that they are getting ready to issue before the treasurer will actually sign off on the checks, she goes and she makes sure that the money is in the Sona Bank account. And then, and that, which includes their payroll also. And then that's how she determines what money needs to be transferred over to cover those checks. And then the, the second column, it shows school deposits into CNF checking. So, what that is, is when the schools actually have miscellaneous deposits, they bring a revenue transmitter over to the treasurer and the treasurer actually deposits that money into our bank account, but it belongs to the schools. So, you have to net those, if you come to the bottom of this. Could you just kind of scroll down a little bit, Eric?
There you go.
Thank you, yeah. So, what you want to look at is, yes, it says 5.4, you know, the 5,450,000 was transferred, but you have to take into account 206 of that was into our account. So, you net the two numbers out for a true number that has been sent over to them. And then as far as what we, when I was talking about the, the revenues that we've earned is the 4.9. That, I mean, by the time June comes around, you know, we have that additional money. So, yeah, it might look like, oh, gosh, why did we send them, you know, the 5.2? Well, we've only actually taken into our account 4.9. Well, that's just like what we were talking about with us. We have to have a little bit of savings in our accounts to carry not only the county, but also the schools through those times when we don't have those revenues coming in. And then June hits us and then all of a sudden, we're back in line. So, it's not like we've sent them something that, you know, that we're not going to receive.
So, this year is, is clear of so far over appropriation? Am I correct in that assumption?
No, we have not, we have not sent any, no, they have not met that. Their appropriation total is 9.5, so they still have 4.3 remaining.
And the, the ongoing audit, where are we with that? Any feedback?
Yes, we, we hope to have further information this week. And we are going to hold off on doing the joint meeting with the schools and the county until after the special election. Kind of feel that at that time, we'd have the new treasurer, our current treasurer, she's, you know, she's got a lot on her plate right now. So, we would rather that, you know, we, we all agree that there's, there, there needs to be some changes in how we're doing things. So, let's go ahead and wait for that treasurer to be in place to be more, where we adopt a procedure that everyone's going to be in agreement with.
And Natasha, you're taking the responsibility of not going over, is that correct from here on?
Yes, I am, yes, yes, definitely. Even speaking with the auditing firm last week, you know, we just talked about how this has been, you know, developed and it is sent to all parties involved. If they have any issues and we go ahead and talk about it right then and there, we're not waiting till the end of the year to discuss things. And they already have said that's a great thing that we're already doing. So, they're already in, in favor of that.
Okay.
So, I also wanted to just touch base about the financial software implementation. It's moving along. County Finance has been utilizing the new software admins for all accounts payable postings since November 1st, 2020. We helped off on using the new software to process payroll until January 2021. The reason for this was concerns with calendar year payroll 2020. We felt it was necessary to complete the year within Bright, the current, our, our, our current financial software to ensure that there would not be any issues with employees W2s. The intent is January will be the first payroll process through the new software. The new software will have an employee portal available in the next few months also that will enable staff to enter time sheet data, submit requests to supervisors for time off, check real-time leave balances, view pay stays, pay stubs, and ability for supervisors to electronically approve time sheets. The timeframe to roll out the employee portal is March 2020. Finance would like to run two payrolls utilizing the new software so we have a better understanding how to train people, how to use it, and also work through any glitches that we might come find. And that's, are there any questions about the, the, the new software implementation?
Natasha, will the new software be waited till the new treasurer comes in too before it goes to that department? So that it all starts fresh with the new person?
Yes, the, the timeline for the new software admins for the treasurer's department is March. So that, yeah, it's going to be really difficult for the new treasurer because of, you know, just making sure, getting a, you know, a good understanding of what we currently have in the Bright system, what has been imported into the new system, doing the data validation and things like that. But, yeah, it's going to be a tough one. We, we really truly want to be off of Bright by April.
Okay.
No, we do not want to have the old system in place during the new fiscal year 2022.
Sounds good.
Natasha, one more question. Dealing with the treasurer's office, is there an issue with something to do with DMV that this new software will not work with?
I talked to Travis Wolf about that. I know he, he mentioned to me something about there were some concerns from the treasurer's department that that wouldn't be available. It's not going to be available the same way we currently have it. It's going to be a link you link onto the DMV website rather than, currently, they use the Bright system to link into the DMV. Well, instead, you're just kind of cutting out that middle person.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Natasha. Now, we have Ms. Esseneri, Financial Overview and Capital Needs.
Presentation that Eric will be bringing up. And he's made me aware that since it's difficult with Zoom for him to be able to see any people that wanted to speak, if you could hold your questions towards the end, that would be helpful. So, what I'm going to be talking about tonight is the Financial Overview and Capital Needs as of January 11th, 2021. Sorry, little glitch there. The vision statement remains consistent with the message the county seeks to portray and follow. A united community embracing diversity, quality of education, quality of public service provided, and life for citizens while balancing competing demands to maintain our rural nature while growing more suburban. The strategic initiatives remain the same as proposed last year. To focus on economic development, strive for a business-friendly environment, protect and safeguard our citizens, support our schools, and partner with the town of West Point so we prosper together. We continue to address public service needs as conservatively and fiscally responsibly as permitted. These actions are fulfilled through our management of debt load, maintaining a stable and necessary general fund balance, protecting and promoting our resources through capital funding and reevaluating our tax rates on an annual basis. The county's debt load falls well within the Government Finance Officers Association recommendations. The county schools currently has six long-term debts, as does the county. This includes the newest loan for the county for the Motorola radio upgrade. As you can see, in fiscal year 2021, the annual debt service is split 43.6% counting and then 56.4% for the schools. And of course, this incorporates the radio upgrade project, which was about 4.7 million over a 10-year period. The benchmark for total debt is 3% of assessed values. The county is currently at 1.26%. The benchmark for debt compared to county school expenditure budgets should be less than 10%. And the county is at 6%, so you can see that we are well within an appropriate range. The county has been working through a reassessment over the past 18 months, which was finalized in January. The newly assessed values will go into effect as of January 1, 2021. Though the Board of Equalization will hear appeals into March and direct what adjustments are to be made, the overall process is complete. The county will implement a new reassessment every two years to provide the county and the property owners a more current valuation between assessments. Of note, during the first round of appeals was the question concerning the real property tax rate. And we'll make a recommendation to the board and citizens will have input during the budget cycle over the next two to three months. King William County is one of two counties within the Commonwealth that operates under a split levy. Because of the split levy, county staff provides an acceptable appropriation budget to the Board of Supervisors that remains within allowable funding constraints. Funding for the county schools to include operations, capital, and debt service must fit within the dollar amount available to appropriate to the schools. And as you can see, that for fiscal year 21, the county's total contribution to the schools, including operational support and debt service, was 11.1 million or 42.3% of the school's overall operational budget. In addition, in fiscal year 20 and 21, the county provided a million in career relief funds to the schools, which excludes the direct care spending received by the schools directly from the state. which excludes the direct care is funding received by the schools directly from the state. Grants remain the best way to leverage county dollars for staff support and one time purchases. We have acquired two ambulances through the grant process, dramatically reducing the impact on county funds. Yanni has submitted a grant request for a replacement brush truck, which will require a five percent match and will be submitting a grant for the S E B A equipment needed by firing EMS. Grants provide support for the school resource officer positions as well as the assistant Commonwealth attorney position. There are two primary criteria the county utilizes when assessing when to submit for a grant. The first is will the grant save the county money? Second is, are the restrictions and reporting requirements practical and feasible? And as we are aware, the delinquent tax balances have been discussed over and over over the last few months, but the treasurer's office has taken good strides in contracting the T A C um, to identify the delinquent amounts and to have them handle professionally by this collection. Also in this year, we have seen financial policies that were brought to formalize the expected processes for debt service for um, handling the funding sources and many others. And I expect that we will continue to see uh, financial policies created as we move forward. I also anticipate that the newly elected treasurer and commissioner of revenue will seek to implement formal policies and processes within their department. The implementation of Edmonds is providing an opportunity for the county departments, social service and the schools to review the processes in place to ensure that appropriate staff are addressing them and that new consistent processes are in place. The local, state and regional agreements we have in place with multiple agencies saves the county by pooling our resources with other localities to reduce the overall impact to our budget. And even though we are involved in regional agreements, um, the reason that it continues to be our best approach is that even though we do have escalations each year, they're minimal compared to what we would be putting out if we tried to manage any of these ourselves. And we're talking regional security centers, juvenile center, transfer and waste sites, the court systems, animal shelter, library and so forth. The projected revenues for this fiscal year highlights the reliance on general property taxes for operations. General property taxes include real property taxes, public service corporation taxes, mines and minerals, personal property machinery and tools and penalties and interest received. And as you will note, out of our current fiscal year twenty one, projected revenue collection of twenty five point six million, nineteen point two is projected to come from the general property taxes. Expenditures break out to reflect the schools report as the largest expenditure with county personnel as the second. The third largest expenditure is the local, state and regional agreements. Through the use of capital expenditures, we have upgraded and dramatically approved the basketball courts at the rec park, added a dog park for the community at the rec park thanks to Nestle Perina. We have completed the interior renovations at the three sixty complex to provide additional space for the sheriff's office and the Parks and Rec Community Center. Capital funds support the implementation of a new financial software as well as a new appraisal software. The county website was completely revamped and the board and commissions benefited through the civic clerk keyboard implementation. And I would be remiss. I would be remiss if I did not um, state how much our facilities department does to leverage the capital funds that the board approves. Uh, just in the basketball courts, they broke up all of the asphalt, they took down the fences, they did all of the painting once the new slab was laid. The dog park, they did all of the leveling, moving of dirt and earth and soil to uh, level out the area. Um, they just, they did a great deal with the three sixty complex. Um, they did sheet rocking, they added a um, uh, ADA bathroom, closets, H V A C work, you name it. Um, our facilities department is a very small department, but those gentlemen do an amazing job. They leverage our capital funding every single day. And I hope that if you get the chance to meet Frankie Reed or any of his staff, that you'll tell them that you do appreciate that because I greatly do. So the capital needs identified for fiscal year twenty twenty one through fiscal year twenty twenty five is a five year plan and it includes renovation and build out of the courthouse unfinished wing for an additional courtroom. Originally, we had considered uh, finishing out the courthouse wing for additional offices for uh, B J triple C A and the courts, but in uh, providing Judge Bondurant some options, uh, he stated that a courtroom would be much more needed. Painting the station one parking lot and finishing paving the three sixty complex area behind the building is also needed. Uh, we've been very fortunate, the um, upper man and I have taken care of us by um, finishing out parking lot between the two buildings on three sixty, but we do need to do some additional work behind the building. Renovation of the Parks Recreation Center building and gutting and renovation of the old health building that houses the B J triple C A and J T R Court Service Unit is needed. There will also be annual expenditures to maintain county facilities, re-roofing, replacing H V A C units, cooling towers, recarpeting, painting, replacing windows. We anticipate replacing two sheriff vehicles each year with an occasional replacement for other departments. In addition, the county can expect to replace the fire engine and added ambulance to the fire and EMS fleet. Various other fire and EMS related capital needs include an emergency signal on three sixty in front of the fire station, replacement of the S E B A gear and the annual support provided to the three fire EMS organizations within the county. Lastly, with the updating of the master utility plan, the county is now aware of water storage needs, fire flow needs, and potential well replacement or expansion of the loop to support the font and blue industrial park. And since the discussions that uh, took place at the last board meeting about V I P S A, um, I did not include that in here, um, just because I'd already completed the slides. But um, with doing some renovation work at the existing sites and a uh, potential expansion or new site to replace the transfer station next to the high school. Um, I would anticipate that we're probably looking at probably an about another million dollars in capital needs for that. And one thing that I do want to mention to you about the capital needs is is always we look at all of our resources, we look at the general fund balance, we look at our proffers, we look at our reserves for say animal shelter or for parks and rec that we might utilize for projects with them. And we're also going to be looking at lease purchasing uh, for the fire engine and the ambulance. And then if the board has an appetite to move forward with any of the infrastructure, then I have invited uh, Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport to come to the February work session so that we can discuss the options for funding some infrastructure projects, how we would go about it, what type of timeline we would be looking at, and what type of funds would be needed and then looking at some financing options as well. Um, but understand that the infrastructure capital would be paid out of the sewer and water revenue fund, it would not come out of the general fund. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Bobby, I'd just like to say the uh, Parks and Rec building on three sixty, we just had a Parks and Rec meeting, I think it was Thursday. I was really impressed with the work that uh, that that's been done there. It's really a nice building inside and they have finished paving. I don't know whether any of the other board members have been in there yet or not, but it's nice.
Thank you. I, facilities did a great deal of that and we're just very fortunate to have those, the young men.
Any other questions from anybody? Um, thank you, Ms. Tassinari. It's an ambitious plan. Um, but we know what the needs are and uh, we need to see what we can do to to get these things going. So I appreciate your work on that. Um, next up, we do have an add up, added item of five G that Mr. Hodges wanted to uh, discuss this evening. Do you want to uh, kick off that discussion, Bill?
Yeah, wh- what it was, I had a request from a citizen and I understand um, Mr. Moore and all also had had discussions with uh, residents concerning the cost of RVs or motorhomes and uh, the best I can determine now is really the only one we could honestly be able to identify would be the motorhomes. Uh, if you wanted to do a reduction or had an interest in that because they're the only ones separated out. Your normal uh, R V trailer is listed with a utility trailer, so it would be very difficult. And right now, we don't need any added stuff on uh, you know, our staff. Uh, I think the figure and Bobby corrected me on uh, that you gave me is about forty six thousand in tax revenues, a little over that. And uh, with that, I I mean, my, I I guess I would have had some questions for our county attorney is could we possibly, if we were doing a reduction, could we do it for folks that are of retiree age, I guess? Specifically, uh, like I said, it's forty six thousand in tax revenue. Uh, I don't foresee, you know, cutting all that, but it, some places I think cut fifty percent of it. It does lead to believe that you could have somebody with uh, I don't know, tractors next, next year, you know, coming in in mourning, a uh, a reduction or or the R V trailers. It it may not end. I think Mr. Garber even mentioned that. Uh, and we got to think about that before we make a hasty decision. It 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 looks like it's like sixty one uh, vehicles that are motorhomes in the county uh, that are registered here. And the tax rate, and of course, we can't uh, control the town, but the tax rate for that is like four ninety four per hundred, counting both localities, the county and the town. Uh, we can only adjust the county anyway. Uh, I did advise Mr. Seeley uh, in the town of West Point, that he should contact the town council for any kind of reduction if he if he seeking that down there. That's pretty much uh, Ed, Ed, did you have anything that really add to that?
Well, uh, one question right up front is the limitation on being able to identify a a toe behind trailer, is that a D M B issue or is it something local?
Bobby could probably answer that, but I think it's a way that we uh, coded. Co- coded, I don't know, but Bobby, can you answer that?
It's the system, our uh, bright system that has limitations. Uh, I don't know if moving forward with the new system, that that would have an impact. If it's something I'd have to look at. Our current system, uh, it's, it would be very time consuming to go through each one to determine if it's a utility trailer or if it's actually a R V trailer.
Right.
Well, please, I suggest, how to suggest that we put that on the uh, list of things to look at to be able to discriminate and make it a little more fair. But Bill, I think uh, if we, and I think Ms. Tassinari is going to look at it, the surrounding counties, what they charge uh, similarly and and come up with a little bit better. I I know no one probably knows how we got to this rate. It is uh, it is a little high extravagant in a way, but I'd like to do something to uh, offer especially some of the higher higher uh, assessed. A little bit of a break. Again, they don't use it, they don't use it, they're not beating the roads up, they're not uh.
Yeah, it's it's two schools of thought there. When you buy one, you know, w- we we will, you know, I'm in favor of it actually, but we'll be giving a break to those who probably need it the least. If you can afford one, you know, I think the rate is too high for sure. I would be in favor of reducing it. Uh, and you know, I I email Bill back and forth and uh, the the next thing you're gonna have is individuals with boats. They will want a break and uh, some of the boats can be astronomically expensive also. Uh, and you know, it does, we do, we, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the average ones, the way I was looking here, I don't know, seventies on the high side, it looked like, yeah. I was expecting to find a three hundred or four hundred thousand dollar motorhome and I was gonna have a heartburn with that.
Well, you know, some people who own real estate in other counties or either other states, they have them registered there also.
Right, I understand. He did mention that Essex is at fifty percent of the assessed value.
Exactly, yeah.
Is what he did mention in there.
That's, that's right. I I looked that up and it's uh, you know, we have a place in Essex and that's, that's true.
So, all right. I'll chime in here with a couple of things. Um, the way that we arrive at the rate, that rate has not changed. It's the personal property tax rate. Um, it's been the same since Mr. Greenwood and I have been on the board. Uh, we haven't adjusted it. I don't think a single penny since since we've been here, have we seen it? We've moved it around, but never the personal property rate. Uh, that has stayed the same for the last at least nine years. And I think it had been that that rate for a couple of years before we arrived as well. But that's the rate that we um, you know, felt compelled and been comfortable keeping level. So I I'm I'm happy to look at what other localities do. I certainly don't want to be an outlier uh, or or be doing something unfair to our residents that's causing them to, you know, take an act that's maybe outside of the bounds of the law when it comes to vehicle registration. Um, I will say that in pointing this out, we've been taxing these vehicles the same way for a decade. And this is the first time I've heard a big push to change anything about the taxation on them. So um, you know, I I just want to look at what other localities are doing to make sure that we we are in fact an outlier because again, I would have thought I would have heard something about this, you know, in in the years prior, if if we were way out of bounds. Um, but let's do that research, you know, this is all going to be incorporated as part of the budget. That's when we set these rates. Um, so we'll be ready to act on it uh, at at that time. But let's continue this discussion. Uh, it's it's one I'm happy to have, but I I need some convincing that we're doing something that's not um, that's abnormal because again, we've been doing it this way for so long.
Right.
And just to give you an idea on on this gentleman's, uh, he's paying thirty four hundred and forty five dollars and forty five cent, counting the town and the county per year to have that vehicle in personal property tax.
And Bill, what would it be if it was only county assessed, not town? Any idea?
You're gonna make me get a calculator.
Is it three sixty five? Is that what it is? Three dollars and sixty five cents?
Right.
Three.
But it 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 appears that his beef is primarily with the town.
Yeah.
Well, we're three twenty nine, we're three twenty nine and he did list all the others. Uh, the the town is what really adds. I mean, wait a minute, is this, does he have this wrong? Are we three twenty nine, we one sixty five?
Yeah, yeah, his his figures weren't exactly right.
It sounds like he's got those decimals flipped at some stage and one, I think that backend belongs to us and the other end belongs to the town.
That's what I think too.
Yeah, he's he's got it.
Just, just, uh, King Queen was three ninety four, New Kent was three seventy five, Caroline three eighty, Gloucester two ninety five, Middlesex two ten. And Essex, not quite uh, sure, they're at four dollars in Tappahannock, but a dollar twenty five assessed rate for the rest of the county is the way I think it reads.
I don't think, I don't think that's exactly right either, Bill, but they do uh, reduce the rate, I think fifty percent. And the town, the town of Tappahannock is is similar to the town of West Point. They have a a rate also uh, over and above the county.
Right. Okay, well, like I told you, you know, he could, he could go to the town also. I don't, I don't know that they share an interest in doing it. And I I, you know, I I'm sort of mixed on it myself. Uh, like you said, you know, if you can afford certain things, you know, that's part of of playing a game, but because believe me, I don't pay quite as much as he he does, but I'm not going to lock the door right behind him on personal property tax.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I say something? I'd like to see if we could get some more figures. Like you said, we have a couple of surrounding counties, but let's get maybe more counties than involved in how much the actual rates are and which ones have cuts. And then maybe even check Westmoreland because like the Westmoreland is the only other county that has the split levy like we do. So just curious if they even have something similar or not. I'd be interested in just seeing a little more comparisons.
It's a good idea. I'll actually make a note and look that up on Westmoreland.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that?
I don't.
Yeah, well, not on that, but I would like to ask a question. We're going to have to answer it. We're going to have to answer it sooner or later. I know that.
That'll fit right into the next agenda item then, which is going to be Board of Supervisors requests. So, Mr. Garber, your hand is effectively raised, so take it away.
Well, it's not actually a request, but if memory serves me correct, we were somewhat in agreement that we were going to equalize the real estate rate. Are we still looking at that and maybe working the budget around that? Because this is, this is going to be a chunk of change right here, so far as the relief possibly on the RVs.
Don't, don't we have to wait for the Board of Appeals?
First of all, these are assessed as, well, hold on, I'm going to say something wrong if I get ahead of myself. I understand these are not assessed as real estate, they're assessed.
Oh, I know, I know. I'm not, I'm not even looking at the, I'm just, it was my understanding that we are looking at equalizing the real estate rate. Are we still, are we still on board with that?
That has been the stated will of this board.
Exactly.
Tassanari, that's how she's building her budget right now. That would be a question for her. But I think the board has been consistently clear that our desire has been to have a fully equalized rate with no
Public hearing.
Every year, every year.
Yeah, I've been asked that a lot, and that's what I've been relaying to people. And I just thought it was probably time, since we're getting ready to do the budget, and maybe set the rate soon. You know, that's what I've been telling people, and I just wanted to see if we were still looking at that. That's all.
All right, anyone else have anything that would fit under item six? Any requests, questions? Any meeting ideas?
Mr. Chairman, not, other than just still reminding folks to be very careful with COVID, I mean, it's, I continue to see friends and people I know, acquaintances that I know that are passing away from this. It's not a joke, it's something that can be very serious. And they really need to take it as being a dangerous item to deal with. But that's, that's all I have.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing also?
Yes.
I just wanted to throw in that, like I said, the Board of Equalization is meeting, so if people still are concerned with their assessments, or are they not happy with the results from the first appeal, call Olivia at the county and make an appointment with the Board of Equalization. That's your last chance. If you don't go in there, I mean, you don't have any, I mean, I hate to say it, but if you don't try to appeal it, you don't have a right to complain. I mean, you got to go in there and do something if you want, if you're not happy with it. So, and there are only a few dates, February, March, so call and make an appointment. They're filling up fast, so do that if you're unhappy. And then I've got a lot of complaints still, too, like Stuart was saying. State law is we have to be within 1%, and like I said, when I was chairman, we pushed it. We do not want it to go over that 1%. We have to vote on it if it is, that it has to be public hearing. But I'm, I was assuming that we're staying within that, too, but people are still worried that that equalization rate is not going to help them, because these numbers, the percentages, which even the Chastain told us, do not make any sense. I mean, some of them are 40%, some are 60%, some are 100%. And it's not going to be a flat 20%, whichever rate we come out with. People have to understand that it's going to be different for everybody, so it's kind of hard to determine how you're going to, but equalizing, they should know if their assessments within whatever they allowed amount to go up was, the average, they shouldn't pay any more than they did before, so. It's still confusing. Thanks, Simon.
Well, say it.
Anyone else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second. I'll second, third.
Ms. Lawrence, you can sort out who made what motion and second.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Gossel?
Hi. Thanks, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Good night.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Yes, congratulations.